She's in back tonight. We're searching for her. Let's get started. It is now 5:39. This meeting is called to order. And we have an agenda in front of us. If anyone would like an agenda, there's some out front. This is a very short agenda, but most of the, most of the meeting will be deliberation. So that's why you see our new configuration here. We wanted to, where we can see everybody and we can all comment. And we will have our agenda as outlined. And we will start with our invocation and pledge by Ms. Johnson.
Dear Heavenly Father, I thank you for this beautiful day. I pray that you would give us wisdom and patience as we discuss everything here today. Pray that our decisions would be a blessing for all of Newberry County.
Yes.
In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Before we start deliberating, I think Mr. DeBose, I think you had some information you wanted to share with us all tonight?
I'm not there. Yes, Mr. Reverend did want me to bring you up today on what we've been doing in terms of trying to deliver to y'all a figure, to a target figure. We got some results back from the State Bureau of Economic Advisers last week. And based on that and based where bond rates are today, we think your target figure is about $37 million. It's good news. I think when we came into this process, I was between 30 and 33 million. Just collections have been strong in Newberry County. I'm expecting a little fall off as spending stimulated by the federal programs like ARPA and what have you. Peter's out, but they expect it to come back in this fiscal 2024. Provide a couple of other million dollars to help with these programs. So that's just when you're, again, guiding your thinking, it's a little bigger number than I discussed with you three months ago.
Okay. All right. Okay. Deliberation. Okay, good news with the 37 million because we've, we've got a tough job ahead of us. And we've been kind of trying to figure out how we would begin with this. And what we've decided as a group is to go down our list and let's try to, based on all of the discussion that we've heard, based on all of the presentations, what can we possibly as a group eliminate? Now, I know there'll be discussion, but let's start with three. Three that we want to eliminate that maybe all of us can agree on, and then we'll move forward. Any comments on that? Any discussion? Yes, sir?
I like the pretty much established well, we have Prosperity. Based on the return of ROLI, that amount of money, that project could be cut. I think that water source is from Lake Murray, if I remember the conversation about it. And I really don't see any justification for that. It's four million, five hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. As a reference, the conversation about it, I mean, the property, if I remember the conversation where the mayor, the property had not been secured. It was based on being able to find an actor and have that amount of water. And it was based on savings of a hundred and eight thousand dollars per year. So that would be my, my project.
All right. Okay. Anyone else? Prosperity Well?
Yeah, I have some comments on that. I agree, Mr. Reed. Especially when it's going to create more wastewater that the Newberry County water source authority has to handle and treat, and they're up on an expansion as well. So if they're asking for an expansion, this is going to create more wastewater. I agree with the cutting this project.
Anyone else? All right, that's one on our list. All right, number two. Anyone?
I think Mossen's Way is the one I believe should eliminate, be eliminated. I think it serves a small group and shouldn't be funded for the entire county.
You think the entire project or the project? It's two steps. One of them is for the extension. That was a million dollars.
The extension was 400,000.
400,000.
And the improvement was 1.6.
I said Kisswire, Samsung, and three other projects. I just hope. I agree with you, the road condition is not as bad as it was described to us. Or in my perception, it wasn't as bad as it was indicated. My thoughts, maybe fund one part of it. They're, I think Samsung is going through a major hiring shift. There hadn't been a hundred, over a hundred cars on the grass this afternoon, before 30. And you had the extension, you don't need that. You already got a second extension that goes through down toward the old Holiday Inn. It's West Creek. And you went out that way. So, you know, I think you're right that part of it needs to be eliminated. The number of dollars, I mean, it's the only company I ever thought back. I went and looked at it only three times, you talked about, but the non-traffic, and I'm sure that they have traffic, but there are two different ways to come out there without having to, having to do it.
I agree also, but he also left us with an maybe, a verba maybe, that he had maybe going to receive 2.5 million from the state to help with that project. I don't know if he ever got it clear that he ever came back with it, but he did state that, that 90% that the state would probably allow him 2.5 million to do this job.
Well, maybe he does.
Yeah, I would agree that, you know, that only serves really a small part. And I would be in favor of cutting the entire project. And if they're looking at some money through the state to, and like Mr. Reed said, they do have some problems with the existing road out there. But if they're looking for the state, they, maybe they can get funds to take care of that problem that they have out there now as far as road improvements, but extension though.
Any other comments on Mossen? Also, there was a, the comment made too about a verbal agreement between Kisswire and Samsung. Verbal. So that was, that was one of my concerns, that it was just a verbal agreement, that nothing was written down. So that was one of my concerns. So with this one, do we want to cut the entire project or just part of the project? We've got it separated into two parts. 1, 1,006,000 for improvements, 400 for the extension.
Of those two projects, you've got to look at it standpoint, what Samsung and Kisswire are into this community. And, you know, it's just amazing to me, the number of people that are told that I don't have any of that out of Newberry County. But we, they run, run total out of space. There's no additional space between Samsung and Kisswire building another facility. It's got to be down toward where the hotels and motel are from. So, you know, my deal is if the project stands point, cut the total project, if he has 2.5 million dollars, that would, that would more than cover the 1.6 billion question. So I would, I would cut the entire project based on what he stated here.
I mean, they do the whole project.
I'm in, I'm in favor of the whole project. Okay, that's, all right. Number three. I'll give mine. I said the Little Mountain Amphitheater because that was on the list as, as the least wanted of the, I mean, all of them are wanted, but the list,
Her priority list.
That was the priority list. That was the one that was at the bottom of that priority list.
That's 1.9 million?
Yes. Yes, sir.
I agree.
Little Mountain Amphitheater.
We've got one already scheduled, and I propose for you, and that could be sort of due to business.
All right, before we go any further, are we all in agreement with Prosperity Well, Mossen's Way, Little Mountain Amphitheater?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. All right. I'm not a mathematician. What's our numbers on those three? How much is that saving us?
That's 39.6.
Somebody did it.
It's the first college. The 39 should be a little, so you'd see that.
No, I mean, of those three projects.
Yeah, we'll count those three projects. What's that, 39?
So put it at 39.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's only about 2 million away.
Okay, I didn't know it was running. Thank you. Okay, okay. So that puts us at?
About 2 million dollars, that more.
Okay, 39.14. Okay. 1, 4, 7, 9, 4, 9. Excuse me.
Since we cut, we got three that are, you know, we agree to get rid of. Do you want to like, we could pivot and say like, are there any that anybody has that they're like, I definitely want this one?
We can go.
As opposed to like, because we're kind of close to the number. So we may be able to switch to the other end and.
I, I do have one thing I would like to discuss.
Okay.
Before we go on. The Friendly Fire Department, I am not opposed to it. I just think that is very massive. And I know we ask and they don't want to come off, but I still don't see why we can't do half and build on later. I mean, that's 7.75.
That was my concern.
I'm, I'm very concerned about that. I feel like it's too big of a chunk.
They could phase it out.
Yeah.
Still phase one and then add on all the time. That was one of my, my negative source project. Because they stated even in the, in the letter we received afterwards that they did not want to phase it out.
Phase it out, yes.
In which.
And I've always been for every fire department, and I'm for that. I just think that it's massive. I think we could scale back some.
I don't, I don't think we need to do this because they've been, they've been, we started with the county, started with fire, life, and get it there. I don't think we need to take anything to protect our family and friends or those who need it. Okay, you know, they've been delivering here for years and we, and we handicap them, we're going to handicap. People who really live in this county, they're going to need that service. That's a service that you have to use and that you have to have, and we need to be there. I don't want to be, because we didn't vote for it and then someone, family get burned up, someone lose some, a life or so or other. I don't want that on my conscience.
Well, I don't think she was talking about doing away with it completely. I think she was talking about maybe looking at, you know, they presented it as the Friendly Fire Department with a training center and also the rescue squad.
Right.
So I think what we're looking at is do we need the Friendly Fire Department and the training facility and not the rescue squad part of it. I think that's what she's kind of driving it.
That's exactly. Yes.
Well, that's what I'm saying, the rescue squad.
They're in perfect spot right now. They're adjacent to the hospital. You've got the doctor's office behind them and about four convalescence centers that were in a half mile of it. I went and looked at the pavement that they talked about. There were seven ambulances there, three inside and three outside.
No, they're not looking at, yeah, they're not looking at EMS. They're looking at the rescue squad building, which is out there beside where they got their training facility. They wanted to convert that into the hazmat. But I think that, I'm, I'm like Harry, you know, I come out of public safety and I, well, the public safety sector, and you don't want to handicap anybody in, with Friendly Fire Department where it is now. It's not in the location that it needs to be at. But we don't, we're looking at the project as far as what they presented as far as, because we asked them about this other one they had, which was about a million and a half, a little over a million dollars more. And they said they wanted to go with the biggest part of it, but I don't want to handicap them in any way. Yeah.
I'll be right to the discussion that I had, when I thought they included the EMS.
No, they did not. Yeah. It does just the rescue squad, a part of it.
Rescue squad.
So.
Okay.
I mean, the other one that I'm looking at tonight was 6.125 instead of the 7.7. But like, you know, Harry said, you don't want, public safety is paramount, so.
How did you get that number?
There, it was another one that was in the book also. Yeah.
6.1?
6.125.
Is that a reduced number?
Yeah, that was a reduced number just where you didn't have the EMS part, the rescue squad part of it on there.
Well, you know, I, I, one thing that I look at, what do you gain by moving the fire department from where it presently is to the fairground, Old Fairground? What do you gain there?
Well, one thing, they get bigger equipment, that equipment, and they can, right now, they don't, they got a limit.
On what size truck they get in the system and actually coming straight through town.
Response time is still going to be, it's going to be more than where it is right now.
I don't know, because you're coming out of the downtown area with traffic light and more traffic and stuff like that out there. They could, it's not as much traffic where you can go back towards the bypass and get out and, and without any problem. That's what I'm thinking.
Well, if you remember my question, the lawyer from Samsung asking, is that the one that's going to put out the fire at Samsung? He said that's correct. That was the same question I asked.
Does the city, the city have Samsung?
They just, they just found a ladder truck out there. That's friendly, that falls under Friendly Fire Department.
Falls under Friendly.
I just, I like that, that one. It is a lot. I like that it seems to set them up for future growth too.
Right.
As opposed to like, and, and I mean, the phase question is interesting. I don't really know construction that well. Like, maybe it is ultimately cheaper to do it all at once. Like, that's, that's just a thought, because like I said, I don't know construction. Like, as opposed to segmenting it off, like, would you end up spending 10 million or something like that if you did it in phases just because of, I don't know, just a thought. I like that it's like, it's, it provides for future growth. And, I mean, hearing that the rescue squad, like, I forget exactly what they said, but like, they are violating codes, which some, means something to me as a medical professional, like storing the medicine with the, whatever else it was stored with. Like, they, it's supposed to be locked up, and the only place they could lock it up was like, also with the electrical or something. It was like a fire, they're violating the fire code, not the medical code. Anyway. And like, right now, it's completely volunteer. They have a tiny space and like, they can't expand their trucks. And I feel like Newberry County is growing, so maybe by like, providing a place that allows for that, you know, kind of sets them up for paid positions in the future. And maybe they could even, if they are able to host trainings here, that's a savings in some money they're spending as opposed to sending people elsewhere. I mean, maybe just something to like, continue thinking about because it's. Uh, we could, if you wanted to go back to cutting, we could roll to like, the Prosperity Parks and look at his rankings. Like, remember the park, all the park projects? Or like, the Little Mountain, like, do we want to give her all the other projects? You know, the, those two have several different things.
Okay, so we have, we have Friendly on the table. Whether or not we want to move forward with it, whether or not we want to cut some. Whether or not we wanna move forward with it, whether or not we wanna cut some of it, or whether we wanna put it to aside right now and look at cutting other sta, other things.
Well, I think that six, if it's six point one million dollars, I think that is an acceptable number, it's been on the books a couple times before. I agree with the need to be cut, that'd be a million and a half cut.
That's a million, mhm.
And if we get back to something surplus and we can go back and look at it again, is we can fund the whole thing, I mean.
Can we put it at, yeah.
Well, right at another right now.
That's why I said, maybe we should set it aside, and then look at-
This is down to thirty-seven million right now.
Where are we? We will, let's set aside, let's let, let's set Friendly aside and see if there's anything else that we would like to cut, or anything that we feel that we will do not want to cut.
So we at cutting or what we wanna fund right now?
We're looking at, I think we're doing better with the cutting than the funding. So let's go with the, is there anything else that we would like to cut?
I think we, I think we wanna look at the parks.
Well, I, I feel like we should look elsewhere first, because we just cut a big project from Prosperity. And I feel like they're a growing area, and, I mean.
Okay.
That makes sense.
I, I mean, they're growing, they're booming, and if we're gonna cut that on four point five, let's look elsewhere and see. Um, what about the complex?
Before we do that, do we have, Ms. Brimmer, we had a question, we had a concern about Whitmire.
Yes.
Yes.
Whitmire Gym. When we were here before, they said that they could possibly do it at a lower price, but we didn't get any information.
He said it was eight hundred thousand.
Right, right, yes.
Mr. West had estimated at eight hundred thousand, that was not projected when it would cost later. That was projected if it cost it now. He said maybe up to a million dollars, but this was just an estimate that he came up of. It wasn't something where he checked prices, as Alliance did. He did not say that he would stand behind that, that's one reason I did not see it too.
Allison talked about the fourteen percent, uh, they talked about fourteen percent that that would cover it. And, you know, my question is, if that's the case, that number would be a hundred ninety-three thousand dollars where it would be awful close to the eight hundred thousand dollar he talked about. I mean, his total number was, uh, uh, what, a million, a million three? And the fourteen percent was put in at, uh, right at one point one million. Can we get some clarification maybe from him, uh, as to that number, with him or Allison, either one?
He said Allison.
Uh, the, uh, estimator, that does-
Alliance.
Alliance.
You don't want last?
Yeah.
The one point three is the number we filled out.
Well, we had that discussion back there when he told us eight hundred thousand, if you remember. I was standing right where you were at, when he made that statement.
I'm the one that's gotta stand behind the numbers, one point three is what he said.
But, um, you said last time that you were gonna go and look, because you said you had never been there, and you made that number, and you said you were gonna go and verify, did you do that?
We have not, but he did provide us photos to look at, and I believe we're looking at those, I still feel a little bit. I mean, you can do a scope for eight hundred, and what we talked about last time was if you feel that you need to cut them to the eight hundred thousand, what you can do is be morbid with gym improvements as opposed to listing every single item, then they could do eight hundred thousand dollars worth of renovations, and then the bid would determine the scope, and that's a lot of time to provide that flexibility with.
Well, what he was talking about was the roof, that's what he wanted done. Didn't want floors done, he just wanted the roof and the electric. And, uh, you know, in reference, I think it would, uh, would be a good deal if you had one of your people look at it. I mean, the roof, that's, I don't know what square footage that building is.
I mean, just the roof and electrical isn't what we're looking at, but I think-
Well, that's what he was looking at.
That, that's at a minimum, that's correct, but once you actually have a building inspector going there and do a code assessment, there's gonna be more stuff. Just like if any, we just be building, considering for a long time. So, that's the number we would fill, and again, you know, if you have a building inspector, go in there, and we're, we're still in here, we're gonna do the architectural side of it, so if you get an architect to go in there and really evaluate it, then maybe they can look at a different number, but how to change their number again. Maybe their numbers will go up.
Well, what do we do, what do we need to do to make certain? I mean, you know, you, you talk about you've never been there, what do we gotta do to make certain?
I think the first thing is, Whitmire has to define the exact scope of what they want.
Okay.
If it's just roof and electrical.
That's what he said.
Right.
And the bathrooms.
And the bathrooms.
And the bathrooms. The ADA bathrooms.
Yeah.
And it's not ADA compliant.
Right.
I apologize for calling your company a different name. But I've read your book, I read, read the, uh, one from six years ago where you actually were on site and looked at this stuff. And this book, you, a lot of it, I guess, is based on histories and what other people have stated, right?
Yep, there's a little bit of a difference in schedule from that one.
Yeah, I understand, and I think maybe there might be a little bit of difference in cost if we look at it.
We'll agree to disagree, but, uh, the, I, I, I feel, the number we've got is representative of an updated value. Now, if the scope is reduced to just the roof and electrical, totally different story, that's not what we were asked to price.
Okay.
So I think if there's clarity on the scope, then we can revise the cost, but based on what we were asked to price, we are confident in the-
What did, what did he ask you to price?
Essentially, it's a total of-
Cause he, he said back there, the only thing is the roof and all.
Yes, there was some discussions back and forth, and I think some of that was a little bit watering to try to make sure they're in consideration too. So what we were asked to do was bring the building up to code to be able to be used as a unit. And as of right now, the only thing that we're aware of is, in good condition is the floor.
So.
So we're gonna need a lot more than just electrical.
He said cut it, I meant just gym improvements.
Other than the chips on the outside of it, yes.
So, I, I, I'm just gonna be blunt here, can we cut the thirteen, I mean, the one point three down to eight hundred?
And just listed gym improvement?
Improvements? Or we can't adjust that?
You can adjust that, absolutely. If you just say, we're gonna give an eight hundred thousand allotment, now, it would be good to find out at a minimum what's the scope that they're willing to do. And if it's roof and electrical, then I think you're good at eight hundred thousand, more than good, if it's just roof and electrical. But there is some issues with the bathrooms, I mean, those are ADA compliant, gotta get access to that building. Just gotta look at ventilation, while the floor might be good today, and it'll be good tomorrow, if we're not gonna do anything other outside of just roof and electrical and access.
They are using that building. They need bathroom.
Okay.
Yeah, if it's gonna serve the public, you need to make sure it's ADA compliant and it has a restroom facility to serve the public.
Well, they're still serving the public, I mean, he uses it every day.
Yeah, but it's not, it's not compliant.
There's a difference between using it and being fully compliant, and that's what we-
There's a difference, tell me that again.
There is a difference between if they're using it and if you are fully compliant. And now that it's getting funded by the penny, we need to make sure that it does meet ADA criteria. And is fully accessible to everyone that wants to be outside.
I will say this, I mean, it's the only thing Whitmire asked for. But can't we, can't we, can still send a message to him and like, can you like, detail it out, bullet point?
...or anything, or a project, and say, this is all we're gonna give you, and you have to do your scope to match these dollars. It just makes it more difficult in some cases, because it's different elements that are required to be able to complete the project.
Okay.
Okay.
Eight hundred thousand.
Eight hundred thousand.
Eight hundred thousand.
I agree.
Well, that's who the number looks like now then, instead of thir, one point three eight, for them, thir, eight hundred thousand for.
Right under thirty-seven.
Alright.
I don't, wow.
I'm just saying, alright.
Wow.
Oh, boy.
That would make me happy.
Yeah.
I think we would reach-
The number that has the fire station reduced to six point two, the number of-
Oh, it does?
Oh, it does, oh.
Put it, put it back in, put it back in there.
We were just getting to the number as you were saying.
Okay.
Agreed. Alright.
What about the detention center, did he, uh, did Sheriff Foster not say that that was a number, the eight million was a number from, uh, a couple of years ago, or he said he was, in, uh, potentially would be more than the eight million? Do y'all remember any discussion that he had about that? I mean, I, I tell you what, the jail, I've been over there a couple of times, uh, he wanted me to look at the, they had a water problem. And, uh, I went over there and looked at that, uh, then several years ago. But he talked, he talked to me at length, I talked to him a little bit after, how it did not meet the state's standards. And, uh, I don't know what the state's standards are for, for a jail like that, uh, maybe y'all can educate me on that.
Not me, I, I'd never dealt with a jail or anything.
You had, you had never been?
Well, I've been there, but I don't know what the state's standards or anything are.
Well, he told me it didn't meet up to the state's standards, and, uh-
I think what he presented was, bring it up to standards, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I personally think that should be like, a yes.
You think what?
I think we should do the detention center.
Absolutely.
Yeah, they wanted it last time, and-
Absolutely, and just like Sheriff said, you, you know, building a new-
Jail would be twenty million dollars.
Twenty million or more.
Or more.
And then you've gotta find a location.
My granddaughter tells me that Foster always gets his man, and I believe it.
He does.
I believe it.
So what are we out of that?
Okay.
What, what about, um, you, I think, Ernie started to bring up the Newberry Rec Complex.
Yeah.
What, I feel like some of the items up up there-
Some of it can be-
I was looking at the, uh, cabin driveway and parking improvements, I, I didn't hear them say anything about how that was being attended or anything like that, they talked about the other parts and stuff, so I just think that that could go.
I, I think the lake dock and like, fountain thing could go.
I agree with that.
Along with the additional shelters, I don't know if y'all looked at the map, but like, they're all over the place, and I don't really even know how many people are, you know, would, there's enough use at this time to warrant that many additional shelters scattered all across the place.
So you like the splash pad, the idea of that?
I got kids that use it.
What about the, what about the, uh, the, uh, were you, skate park? Yeah, that's, that's two of the things that I heard a lot of people talk positive about. With the splash pad and the other, the ball field, you pass five ball fields in order to get to the facility. Not counting a disability center, that, uh, they have shelters and whatever. Out of the, uh, deal that he has shown here, I think that the splash pad, uh, the skate park, uh, and maybe some additional funding for landscaping, I was over there at a ball game about two or three days ago, and it just doesn't look like it's, uh, been completed, I guess what they call, regrassing? I mean, if any of y'all have been there, maybe you think the same thing I do.
It just doesn't look finished.
Yeah, it does not look finished, it's not finished.
So what are we looking at cutting?
Yeah, I think on there too, like, the restrooms, for sure.
Yeah, he put it way down in his priority, and to me, that was-
Little kids.
You need as many restrooms as possible.
You have to like, walk a mile, and so then you have to make all your kids walk there, or you leave them on the playground by themselves.
I feel like the top three things, the splash pad, the miracle field, and the skate park are necessary. The splash pad has been a hit for our county, and it serves everyone. The miracle field is different, and it's needed, we need to reach-
So you're saying splash pad, the miracle field, and the skate park?
But I think the additional restrooms need to be there also, right?
I agree with that.
Yeah, an additional restroom.
Restroom, the playground addition, I think, needs to be there also.
No, I'm not opposed to that either.
Right.
And shade.
And shade, yeah.
I mean.
It gets hot.
Shade is always good.
Okay, so-
So what about the connector with the walk, sidewalk and the nature trail paving walk?
Path.
Yeah, I mean, I think-
What's out there now, didn't he say that it's-
It's, it's not good, I think that needs to stay.
I, I'm good with the, I mean-
The nature trail is up there now.
Yeah, but I think the paving part needs to stay there.
A maintenance building, I'm sure.
Yeah, yeah, they have-
It's got tons of-
They, they've got lawnmowers and stuff out there that they need to secure, and they don't have a place to do that now. Yeah, for the upkeep of the park.
Okay, so-
If we cut, just the three things, the hidden lake dock, the additional shelters, and the cabin driveway?
The hidden lake dock, additional shelters.
And the cabin driveway and park, yeah.
Little over six hundred thousand.
So we're keeping skate park, maintenance, shade, and additional restroom?
And-
And playground?
Yes.
I mean, I'm sure if we like, really needed to cut more, we could, but like, since we're pretty close to the number anyway, it seems like we could probably leave everything else, you know?
Y'all expanded this a little bit while I was adding it up, y'all want additional restrooms too?
Yeah.
Yes.
So what you're talking about is the additional restroom, skate park, miracle field, and the splash pad, is that it?
No, the, uh, maintenance, maintenance building.
The maintenance building.
Are you cutting or are you adding? Hold on.
We, we added the maintenance building.
And the sidewalk, the connector sidewalk, and nature trail, paved walking trail, that stayed.
I think they put it up here.
Right? Yep, that's right.
Wait, where'd it go?
Went, he went down to the number.
So we got about nine hundred thousand left, but that's with the fire at the full amount.
Wait a minute, there was only two things, I thought it was something else we cut.
Three, there were three things.
Three to cut, okay.
So you're talking total of two point seven nine five, two five, two million seven hundred and ninety thousand dollars. As for the, the walk, the deal, and what everybody said, that's a reduction of, uh, it's a reduction of almost a, uh, a million nine.
Uh, I think you might be-
Can, can you go back to the-
There's only three things off, see the three right there, Mr. Reed?
Okay.
It's like a reduction of about five hundred thousand.
One four, one, one million four hundred thousand.
Anybody good with those three? Alright, while we're looking at multiple projects, let's go down to Town of Prosperity.
Okay.
Park enhancements, we've got Langford Street as the number one priority, then Town Center Park, Downtown Square, North Main Street, Football Soccer Field, and then Highway Seventy-Six Park.
That Highway Seventy-Six Park, that belongs to the railroad. They got a hundred foot rideaway on either side, so, you know, it's, uh, and to begin with, the only thing I've seen there is just an old walking deal. I don't know what you would, you would talk about a park.
Could be used for a pet park, that's what they were gonna use it for.
Well, they got it, they got asphalt, uh, old walkway there to begin with.
There's old walkway, and it looked like, when I rode by there, there's some concrete tables there.
Yeah.
And then that, it's like a transformer thing there that's real ugly. I shouldn't say that. But it, yeah.
The Downtown Square is a railroad building that they gave them, that start off with. That building, uh, it's, uh, what in front is the old depot that, uh, used to be, when Southern Railway had it. And that, that to me, I don't see that, uh, there's ample enough space to put a park there. I used to be track supervisor, but I don't look for-
Which one, the Down, Downtown Square?
The Downtown Square, yes.
Yeah, two of them.
Okay, that's not a park, though, that's- Okay, that's not a park, though, that's changing that... The...
And the, the gazebo area.
The gazebo area in the middle.
That's what they had proposed to put up there.
Are y'all talking about Town Square now?
Mm-hmm.
What, wait, what was the upshot of the Highway Seventy-Six situation, the dog park, basically?
There's nothing more.
Did y'all feel like good about scratching that?
Yeah.
Yeah, or either cutting, my thoughts are cutting the hundred thousand.
That's what I'm saying, yeah, 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 I feel good about that, I mean...
Are we in agreement on the hundred thousand being cut?
For the dog park?
Yeah. So now you're on the Town Square thing?
So we're cutting that. Do y'all want to cut the one hundred thousand, or do you want to cut the price of the one hundred thousand, or just cut it total?
Yeah.
Cut it total, yeah.
Cut it total?
Cut it total.
Okay, cut it total, I'm good with cutting.
I'd like that sleeping dog life.
Well, he's gone, I, I think we're consensus, a hundred thousand, okay. All right.
Which one is the one that's, uh, the baseball field, is that Langford Street Park?
You know, Langford don't have many things.
Which one is the one with the baseball park?
Langford has a baseball field.
Langford, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, they got it.
It's the one near the town.
One, as you're coming in?
Yeah, as you're coming in, it's on the right hand side.
Mm-hmm.
North Main Street.
What's the name of that park?
North Main Street.
That's North Main.
That's North Main, is that the one with the lighted, uh, walking trail?
There are a million people there every Saturday, yeah.
Which one is going to get the lighted walk?
Most, all of these are major, and are populated by a lot of people.
And I think...
They do a great job of it, the sports complex.
And one of the major concerns with the Langford Street Park was children crossing the street to get to the other park.
Is that the one, uh, by the police station?
No, that's right at the church.
No.
That's the town center.
Right at the church, uh, wide, wide in the church.
When I had the mic, she would be looking at my mouth rather than asking the question. The only thing I had problems with is the Seventy-Six Park and Downtown Square, those were the only, only two items I had that I was concerned about, the rest of it I, I liked.
Okay, so I think we're in, we're in agreement with that, the only one that we're cutting is the Highway Seventy-Six.
Sounds good.
Sounds good, all right, and the other...
We're not going to cut the Downtown Square?
Come back to it.
Yeah, yeah, we'll come.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, now let's move on to Little Mountain. We've got four projects here.
Her biggest priority was the walking trail.
Was the walking trail.
Right. Could we cut some of the, uh, reunion park renovations with the barbecue and the smokehouse? Could we cut that number?
Yeah, have it on the list, yeah.
I had that, I had that as a question mark, too.
Well, we've already cut the amphitheater, what I would, uh, recommend that we cut out of that would be the barbecue renovation and...
That's...
Entirely or just the number that we give her?
Just the number.
Okay, yeah, because she said she wanted to use that, not as a barbecue pit anymore, but maybe add some, uh,
Shelter.
Shelter and storage and stuff like that?
Mm-hmm.
But, yeah.
So what do we need to do?
With ADA restrooms?
Yeah.
So it's nine forty.
I would, uh, that would be, uh, roughly one point four million, a little bit better than that if we cut the, the, uh, we cut the amphitheater, it would be one point four million for the walking trail, and I think, uh, I think that was with three foot walls is what she suggested that they have, that would be a good thing.
So if we're cutting the barbecue pit, how much do we want to cut it by?
That would, uh, that'd give us a number of about one point four or five million.
Were we on the end of it? About eight hundred thousand, too. Is that cut, did they cut that hundred thousand out of there?
Yes.
Uh-huh, it's gone, okay. All right, are we in cons, in a consensus with the barbecue pit, we want to cut it some, not, not cut it completely, but what is our... Somebody want to throw out a figure? I've got one in mind.
About five hundred thousand.
We're all saying...
Five hundred thousand of that, and that would bring it to...
Mm-hmm. That's what, that's what I was thinking.
We're cutting five hundred, or we're giving them five hundred?
Giving them five hundred.
Okay.
It was right around what the project estimated to cost in completion in twenty nineteen, so I still feel like it would do a large amount of what's needed.
Ninety-seven.
Okay.
All right. Prosper, I, I mean, Paul Mary, any, any other cons, concerns with Paul Mary? I mean, I'm sorry, Little Mountain, Little Mountain.
That's got, that's got, that's got everything it needs, the, uh, we forgot one thing about the, uh, I think we skipped over one, the, uh, schoolhouse renovations at, uh, Paul Mary.
Paul Mary.
I, I think that's, that was a reasonable figure, and that needed to be done based on everything that they said.
Yeah, and that's all he asked for, yeah.
Yeah, he was just mainly with the basement doing the floors, and I think that's a good thing.
And they use that building a lot, even churches sometimes use that.
They talk about boy scouts and, uh, weddings, and maybe even graduations, I think that's a good, good, good deal. And it was a good job he had done on the roof, the roof was excellent.
And replacing those tiles, yeah. Okay, do we have any, let's see, if we go back up at the top here and look at anything that we could possibly condense or consolidate, we did have with the museum, we have two parts with the museum, we have roof replacement and HVAC.
I can't go to make a statement, I can make a statement about this, but I will not vote on it, uh, because of my wife's involvement. But you've got to have both parts in order to make it work. Initially, the money was requested and it was cut, uh, the last time around for the, the roof and the air conditioning, there's a moisture problem in that building, it's an historic building, uh, and in turn, in order to preserve the artifacts, I think that you, uh, you need to have both, and that, that'd be my only statement about it, it'd be up to y'all, what we do.
All right, we've heard Mr. Reed's statement, now we have two parts, roof replacement and HVAC. And that's at eight fifteen.
But to maintain all the artifacts there, we know what marsh would do, if we don't get rid of that marsh problem. So it would destroy a lot of things there. So you would have to move that marsh out of there.
So what you're saying, if we don't, if they don't do it, it's going to cause no problems down the road?
Yes, it will.
Any concern with the museum, both parts?
I'm okay with keeping it unless like, we can't find any other money anywhere else, I guess.
Anyone else okay with keeping it for now, unless we have to cut something else, we'll come back to that one?
They're having a world-class, uh, wedding exhibit that you all need to attend at the museum, I mean, they have, uh, I mean, they got people from all over the, the nation coming to that, it's a great thing.
All right, if we go back up to the top of our list, we've got County Courthouse IT. Any concerns with that? I think that's needed.
Their pictures are terrible.
They're in a closet, just get them all. Okay.
Please take the money.
Number two, we're back to the, um, we're back to friendly, let's, let's move on. Uh, museum, I think we're good with that one, we, we may come back, Mason's Way, we've cut... Okay, amphitheater. We have not discussed the downtown amphitheater.
I was looking for it, just...
Three point six million.
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with the amount of money for this, but I would like to see a business plan.
Same.
How, how the, it actually is going to work and how the town, uh, the, uh, city and town will work together in order to make this happen.
I'm there with you.
Um, uh, but I want to see a business plan, uh, I think I saw a little selfie or something, there it is. I want to see a, a, a business plan on who's responsible for what, same thing as, uh, with any other, uh, new business that we have, I would like to see a business plan.
And, and... I don't, I mean, I don't quite understand why it has to be a combination project of the city and the county to me, that makes it a little bit more confusing, and like, we're given the money anyway, so why couldn't it just be all under the city, or like all into the Opera House? Because the more I thought about it, the more your concerns, um, last time when they presented, like, you know, if one person isn't managing the scheduling and everything, like, well, what if someone approaches the county about the pavilion, and someone approaches the city about the amphitheater, and we all know people are not perfect, so, you know, then peoples get upset, or two things get booked at once, and then are the restrooms, like, well, are they going to let, if it's a private party in the pavilion, are they going to let the people in the amphitheater in there for the restrooms, like, it just seems a little, I love the project.
That's a great question.
Mm-hmm.
It's a great question, the thing that, that really concerns me about it is the coordination between the two, and who's the one that's going to supervise these people? I mean, you know, that's, that should be part of a business plan, how the, uh, proceeds are, are going to be projec, uh, projected, and, uh, you know, it's, uh, I've been involved before where we had joint projects, and in turn, it's got to be well laid out about who does walk when and where.
Right.
I agree with what you say.
The city already owns the portion behind, and then if they were going to manage the outdoor amphitheater park, why not just give the city everything, or put everything under the Opera House, and...
But the Opera House is not a park.
I know, but I don't really know why.
That's a great idea, and I'm glad both the city and county are involved in it, that way you've got two that you can call on. But who is the person that's going to be ultimately responsible?
I was in Tex, not Texas, I'm sorry, I was in Lexington. My concern about this project has been, I'd like to see more on how they're going to take the old Petey Johnson's building, and how they're going to redo that. I was in Lexington the other day, and actually I walked through the amphitheater, and it was so beautiful and so new, and I like, I'm just like, know what they're going to do with that old Petey Johnson building, how they really going to make it look so old, so old, make it look so new to fit right in. And I, I'm just thinking about the cost of that, and then, by, by not just building something all the way new.
And half of the cost of that. We're looking at more of a cost to buy the building than to renovate it.
Yeah, yeah, the cost of this is pretty...
Well, my vote is to approve the thing, pending on a, a business plan that shows how it is going to be maintained perpetually.
But do we do that, though?
Absolutely.
Can, can we request a business plan, or are we just approving the finances?
You can, you can request one, but when you take a vote, it's scheduled for two weeks from tonight, it's either on the ballot or not.
What's on the ballot or not, I didn't understand you.
A project.
Sure.
Scheduled now, and there, yeah, there's a little leeway in the way things line up. I'll go back, county council has an adoptive ordinance following your work, and it has to be adopted no later than August fourteenth, okay, county council needs, there you go. But by the time y'all wrap up your work, if you want a business plan, the time to ask for it is tomorrow morning, you say.
Why tomorrow morning?
Because if you want to formulate a ballot with that project on it, or off of it, you don't get to come back in six months after the referendum and review a business plan.
Well, why couldn't we stipulate the business plan be presented to the county council, uh, prior to their vote? Did we not do that?
Because the county council votes for your ballot, up or down, and you've got, your deadline is becoming satisfied, yes or no, with any of these projects, and then you hand it on. Potentially possible, but you would have to meet in session again and have a debate about whether or not to revise it, there's not a lot of time to do that.
What's the timeline that we would have to be in session again? What would be the timeline that we would have to meet to see if this business plan is suitable?
Well, you could hold off until they presented you with the business plan. Council needs, their schedule would be no later than their second meeting in June, and first reading of an ordinance, two readings of an ordinance in July.
Well, they ought to vote to come up with a business plan, this is made second.
I don't know if they can, but if you want to, I would ask them right away.
A gentleman I worked for one time that was very bright once told me, no job is too hard for the person who's not doing it. So I will tell you that, I can't tell you that it's not possible, but to, to come up with a full implementation plan about how to manage all the processes, at this point, we have not found it economically reasonable to, to spend those kind of resources, both the city and the county to do it. Uh, it's quite unusual to expect that kind of an implementation when you're approving a project. Now, for instance, the jail house, you're not, you know, you're not getting into implementing...
I'm not talking about the jail house, we're talking about a new project that's going to be right out here.
Right, and, and I'm just saying, in, in like the fire services, you know, there's a lot of implementation in all of these projects that, you know, you approve the project, and then it has to be implemented. The, I think with the memorandum of understanding between the city and the county and the Opera House, a legally binding document that's a commitment to go forth with a implementation plan, uh, that's, that's what we thought was only reasonable and available to be done in this kind of timeframe. Uh, so, and I, uh, to, to say that we could have a, a full business plan to you before you make your decision in, what, two weeks or so, that's a, that's a pretty tall order, uh...
Well, if you wanted a project, you'd have it done. You get it done, I think you have it done. You know, you get to talk about a business plan, that's what everybody does on some stuff, you... I mean, you know, maybe I'll refer it back to y'all, if, uh, that's acceptable to y'all, I'll go along with what you want to do.
And I, and I think, Mr. Reed, if, if I'm following you correctly, and Mr. Hip, what, what we were saying here is that we already know how fire works, we, we already know how the detention center works, they're just doing a, a few updates, but this is a new project, so we all have our concerns about how this new project is going to work. So that's why we're kind of asking for more clarity of how this thing is really going to work.
And, and I would, I think, uh, I don't want to speak to the city, but, uh, I see Carlton here too, and I see him seeing his head shaking. Uh, we will be more than happy to come back and try to provide clarity, and try to answer your questions, specific questions, but a business plan is almost like sending us out, and if we come back and that's still not, that doesn't answer your questions, because our business plan may not address some of your specifics, so I would like to turn that around and say, ask us the specific questions, and we can get your specific answers. And I think that is a fair, uh, response, if you've got specific questions, give them to us, let us work together, the city and county, and come back and answer them. And, uh, but I don't know that the business plan that we may spend two weeks developing, that may be, that may not answer your question, because what we're thinking about that you may be asking is different, so I, I would just ask you, please formulate the specific questions, and I think we can answer those to your satisfaction.
You know, we asked that same thing, Les, when you were here last time. Some of the questions were about the employees, about who pays for the employees, general about the bathrooms and some of the things associated with that. Uh, who will be the ones that coordinate and go out and get to various venues? The people that will be at the amphitheater compared to the ones at the Opera? So there's, uh, uh, there's issues there that need to be, that need to be resolved about the thing. I mean, I agree with everybody here that we, we wanna do this. But I think also, it can be like a lot of other things that we spend the money and in turn, because of lack of coordination, coordination, because of not knowing who does walk when, we lose a lot of ground. That's my fault.
Yeah, I guess the one question is like, why does the county have to even be involved? Like, why couldn't it just all be under the city?
Well, the county's the one that's gonna buy the building and that's the way it was set up. As this was a joint project between the city and the county. Because that was, uh, we felt like, that was a good thing to do, to show uh, that the city and county were working together on a project instead of working independently of each other. So, uh, that was why it was presented that way. Ultimately, as far as your decision, uh, you know, again, if you've got some questions, the city and the county are, would like to answer your questions. We think it's a great project, we hope you think it's a great project. But if you've got some, some questions that we haven't already answered to your satisfaction, if you've got additional questions, please ask those and, and we will get together and try to formulate answers to this.
Do we want them to present? I would like to hear more.
Yeah, I mean, maybe we can like, think, uh, think about. I mean, I feel like I, I put out some questions and I thought the responses were a bit dismissive personally.
Like, who will pay the employees? The city will pay city employees, the county will pay county employees. Well, what about your other people? There are probably not gonna be city and county employees, full-time employees, that are coming in to work these events. It's a lot of.
I, I, I would just say, if our responses to your questions that you've already posed have left additional questions, we'll go back and readdress those and we will, and if you have additional questions, we'll attempt to answer those. But also, uh, maybe an opportunity, we said in the, uh, your, your information packet that we're gonna have an agreement that describes how the implementation of this will go. I think it's, uh, what was the, the term?
Operating.
An operating agreement. And at the time that we proposed the project, it was not considered, um, needed or cost effective to go into a full-scale operating agreement on something that we didn't even know whether or not was going to be approved.
We're gonna make one more time? We're gonna make one more time?
We will, we will.
Well, we have you and DeWitt and some of the other people here next meeting and we'll ask the questions then. And y'all work on getting a business plan followed again, can you do that?
We can do that and I, I say we can, I certainly think the city would be participating, the county would participate. Uh, but I will ask you, it would be beneficial if you have your questions to us in advance of the meeting so that we can have answers rather than standing up and fielding questions that we may not be, have all the information at our disposal to give you an accurate answer. So I want to, if you give us your questions in advance, that'll help. And then when we answer those questions, if that's first additional questions, of course, we'll do our best to answer those.
That's like a multiple choice test, Les.
We can do that.
I can do that, my questions, I can figure.
Mm-hmm, we can do that and, uh, Ms. Bremer, by two o'clock tomorrow? Mm-hmm. By two o'clock tomorrow? We'll have questions and we'll send them to Karen. Okay. All right.
Only thing we got left is one thing.
Okay, um, no, we're going on down, renovation of Old Gallman High School, Gallman Place, phase one. And remember, this is just phase one. This is all we're responsible for is phase one, the one point four. Any questions? Hearing none, okay. Then we're, uh, we talked about detention. What, my, Cannon's Creek, that's the only one? Have I omitted any? I think that's the last one.
I have a question to ask y'all. How will you spend this money if, if, if it's approved? The, you, you talked about being a social engineer the last time we had the meeting. And you also talked about, uh, reading and literacy. My question is how will this money be used? That you talked about in reference to the building and how much to the special projects? You can jump in here too, because you.
Part, part of the, uh, majority of money would be used for maintenance and renovation of.
The money we're asking for were sale backs.
Yeah, a one point four five.
All of that's for renovation.
You were talking about social engineering.
So, so part, so part of the renovation money will help, uh, provide those services to the county. Uh, the first thing to get done with the phase one in order to provide those services to the citizens of the county.
All the money for renovations, it's gonna enable us to provide, I talk about in terms of human capital, build the human capital, and create the programs that will be there once the building is up.
So the majority of money goes to rehab and. I think y'all talked about five rooms.
Four.
Four?
And the restaurants.
I know who you're talking about, aren't you pulling that max out?
And that, that was the one where you have like, aren't some of the, um, like craft, aren't there like some donations to it? Yes. It seems like a, like a very good and like multifaceted thing to support lots of different community projects.
That's what, that's what service, all of your account.
I think it'd be a good one.
Okay, and we're down to the last is Cannon's Creek, if I have not omitted any.
What is it?
Cannon's Creek, the very last one.
Very last.
Uh-huh, very last, at the bottom.
That sounded really needed.
It sounded, yeah.
Yes.
I mean, I don't think anybody wants, uh, excess wastewater at their home, so.
I think with the growth in that area.
In that area, it's needed.
Okay, where are we with our, oh, thirty-seven?
Three hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars.
Again, I'll, I'll say this, I don't wanna, again, to go back to this. I was mentioning Allison, um, not necessarily fully cutting, but maybe trimming some of the, the, uh, from the bottom three, the prosperity parks. I mean, we're given, for the, for the, we're given almost two million dollars for two parks. If we can maybe trim some of that money from, from, from the, from the North Main Street and the Town Center Football Soccer Field. And we're giving nine hundred thousand for the Main Street and then almost a million for the Town Center Football. So if we can maybe look at those projects, maybe we can trim something from there.
Okay.
Why don't you do that to the town square that we tabled for the one ninety? And maybe pull something else out of the recreational complex?
Oh, you did that.
Yeah, I thought about something else.
Yeah, we can pull something else out of Rec.
I think there's a question.
North Main Street?
That's when we're coming in, right?
Yes, that's the one coming in.
Okay, the question is where the Town Center Football Soccer Field?
That's up there.
That's up there at the police station with the big park.
Okay.
And the big walking, the newer walking.
On Brown Street, that's on Brown.
Yes, on Brown Street.
Okay.
That's already got the accommodations of the bathrooms and the basketball court, several other things there.
And I think one of the other big things they wanted was the lighted walking track. Am I right on that?
And that one is utilized, like probably more than any park in this county. I, I would hate to see, I would say if you're gonna strike anything, I would do the downtown square, that one ninety, and then choose something else from the recreational complex.
About the Town Center Park, that's when we had the discussion, cut that and downtown square. Those would be the two.
Okay, which one is Town Center?
That's the one that you, as you go in, it's on the right, isn't it? Yeah.
Oh, wait, so are there two at Town Center?
Town Center is off Brown Street.
There's a Town Center Park and a Town Center Complex, there's two projects. Town Center Park and Town Center Complex.
Well, Nigga, which one do you wanna cut? Two or one?
Um, I was looking at either the North Main Street Park or the Town. Uh, I think Renee says that the, that the Football Soccer Field is the one that gets the most use, am I correct? The one off.
And the Town Center, well, the, the North Main Street gets a lot of use. I mean, these parks are used all the time.
Downtown Square, that's just a gazebo area.
That's the one you're saying, right?
I would say you could cut that.
Because eventually that'll be parking space anyhow.
And then go back up to, because those, those parks are used a lot.
Yeah, I think so too.
Yeah, I, I mean, they're full every day.
So what's your suggestion on that?
I, I'm suggesting cut the downtown square, that one ninety?
Yeah.
And then cut something else out of the City of Newbury Recreational Complex. Cause we only cut three things and there were several things down at the bottom that he put low on the priority list.
Then we could, uh, that's a seventy-five. We could cut the additional shelters, that would be two ninety-five, that'd get us four hundred thousand dollars.
Well, we've already cut that one.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that one's gone. We need the bathrooms.
Yeah, I had it back. Another thing is, you know, the additional playground equipment, unless you're gonna cut the, uh, the paving of the trail.
I think people will walk if we pave that trail, have people out there walking. So maybe it's the additional playground equipment and let the recreation.
Because they have some, and then the recreation, they can write grants for the playground equipment.
Y'all would agree with that, additional playground equipment?
Yeah.
And the, uh?
We can write, Prosperity can write some grants too for, for these ball fields.
Cut the additional playground equipment. The, uh, the, go back to Prosperity.
And go back to Prosperity.
The Town Park. Yeah, that's a hundred and ninety. So where are we at now?
And the Town, we're cutting that downtown square.
To the North Main Street Park.
So that's forty-seven thousand.
Downtown Square.
At that.
Yeah.
That is, that's taking out the one nine for downtown square. And taking out an additional playground gets you to thirty-seven oh four seven.
And then right there.
All right.
And that gets really everything over.
No, we.
Still against that one.
We gotta get forty-seven. Okay.
Kinda, we, we gotta, we can play with a little. Is there anything?
Yeah, Theodor. I'm thinking.
I see, I forgot there.
So.
I'm thinking.
What else do we?
I think that would be plus minus fourteen percent. Instead of five hundred, we do four fifty.
What about the, what about the, so the shade structures at the Newbury Rec? I mean, it looks like that they're only proposed to be over
Bleachers.
At the, over the bleachers.
Yeah.
Let's get rid of that and.
Yeah, I feel like we could get rid of that.
Well, and it was low on his.
We don't need to really get rid of the whole thing, maybe we can cut the amount.
You're just getting close to the thirty-seven million at this.
We can stay here.
Yeah, you can stay right here because you said you had some other discussion that you may want that may fluctuate one way or the other.
My head is hurting.
The better, I mean, we're going to be on final ballot tonight, I suppose.
Okay.
Also ask for other questions to be answered, especially on amphitheater. And there may be something else you won't answer. So at this point, you can leave it at the thirty-seven oh four seven and then think about how that is. The next step is going to be how you just prioritize those.
Yeah, we gotta burn it down.
Play it all. You know, thirty-seven oh four seven is, it's not, it's not a number that you couldn't use. The estimate is just about thirty-seven million.
I'm not sure if I can say one more thing.
What did you say? Take the shade?
Sorry, cut the shade.
Yeah, if I could say one more thing, sorry, just out of my respect. I think this, as far as selecting projects, the number I gave you is if, if you have a situation with projects that are bonded for next year, that's the number you're close to be settled on. The difference is insignificant. We will be getting some more information and county, and the actual advisors are looking at it. I think this is a good spot. There may be some projects you want to backfill on as, you'll remember that we have non-bonded projects. Right now, we, we just built it up. There could be a couple of million dollars left over. But all those are paid for, they've got to be there for seven years. So, um.
That's true.
I, I, I think what you've done with, what you needed to do with projects that we feel today could be, could be taken in the first swipe at. If you're still feeling good all the way out next year, whatever you're talking about. Uh, I'd also like you to consider, there, there may be some you just want to have to take up any excess funds eight years from now. Doesn't excite anybody, I understand that.
Eight years from now.
Eight years from now.
Well, that, that's what happened.
I hope I'm two years.
The fire system.
Okay.
I don't think you need to get so many sharper.
Okay, okay, all right, all right.
Great.
Okay, y'all heard Mr. DeBose. I think we've done a great job tonight. Um, any questions or concerns about anything before we come back next week? We're, we're getting, we'll have our questions. If we have any questions, think about them, get them to Ms. Bremer by two o'clock tomorrow. Anything else that anyone has a concern about, that you might like a question answered?
Just so that you can have, if you have questions about other projects that you want to kind of answer, your progress is going to be so that you can consider when they have ample time to get back to us. I would say about Thursday, um, of this week, so that we can get the information to you for your little question on that.
Karen, you give us an updated copy?
Yes, sir, we'll reprint that.
Okay.
I've, I've already been all over.
And if you give us a few more questions, I'd actually reprint it. So that you can see what it looks like as of now.
I'm good.
Y'all good? Y'all good?
Social engineering.
Good? Allison?
So one of the things, we've never yet, we have to add it to visit included. Are your next meeting, um, gonna set up for preparations? You did the agenda in the last iteration that you can relate to present your ballot. We added that as an item on the agenda, and should you actually complete that, then you feel ready to go ahead and do it and make a decision on bonded versus easier or second to your projects. We'll add that to the agenda for May ninth. So if you get to that point, you're going to do that. If not, you'll have the next two.
Okay, that sounds good. Okay, we're ready for a joint? Allison, you good? Allison, you good? All right, um, we're down to questions, comments, any other questions or comments?
Just clarification, may I, this, can you like us, city and county government of the state?
Yes. No other questions, comments? Do I, do I hear a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
This, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
All right, good job.